Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake, meeting of council held May the 2nd, 2017. Before we start, we'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Have the approval of the agenda?
It's moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Mino. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of May 2nd, 2017, as presented.
All in favor? Thank you. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Petitions and delegations, item four. Michelle Short is going to be coming up on water issues. Michelle?
Thanks for having me in today.
Hi, your pleasure.
And so I have a few questions, just regarding our brown water issue that continues, actually. I did bring the letter from Brian Coghlan that was dated 2011 stating that there were brown water issues. It was a letter to the editor, so it's been sort of ongoing for the last six years. So my question, first one, is on the March 21st meeting, there were some solutions brought up by OCWA.
They're present here tonight as well.
Okay. So I'm just wondering what has transpired from there?
Regarding specifically which?
Well, there were three solutions that they had brought up. I'm just wondering which one they have worked on first, or second, or third?
I think Aqua is, they're waiting for you to do your presentation and they're going to come up and answer your questions afterwards.
Okay, okay. So I did bring some water samples just to show you exactly what the people are dealing with here in Kirkland Lake, and this is like, you know, a regular occurrence. This was like 10 days ago and there's a lot of sediment. So this one is from the bathroom here today, it's very clear. I don't know if that could be tested or not, or probably not. Could it be just to make sure that like the chlorine level is?
Can I speak?
Sorry.
Sure, we'll make this as easy as possible for voters. Sure.
Okay. So just, this one is the clear one, it was just taken from the bathroom. I don't know if that could be tested to see?
It could be tested, so we could, we could test it for, what we typically do is on a weekly basis, we take a variety of bacteria samples all over town, and then, and then on the last half of the week, we also take chlorine levels at various places all over town. So I would, I would say that I would hazard a guess that this water is right now perfect.
Okay. Yeah, obviously, right? So I guess with the solutions that were brought up, which one are you looking at first?
Okay, so for some of the technicalities with respect to the solutions, I'm going to ask Anthony. Anthony's been doing a lot of the work, but we've looked at two, we have to look at two areas, and we have to understand, Michelle, that, that, the most foolish thing we can do is to, is to seek a very simple answer. Okay, water treatment is difficult in itself, okay? So there, we have different options on the table, and we have to consider not only the initial capital cost and, and the money that's available to make the moves, but we have to think of long-term operating costs, we have to think of future climate change and what's going to happen from there. And so when Anthony came to speak with, with council last, in March, he spoke to a couple of different issues. Number one was, we thought, okay, we can change the intake location, because we found that with depleting oxygen levels in the winter, what happens is the manganese and iron levels, they tend to rise at the intake itself near the bottom of the lake.
Right.
Okay, and there's, there's various biological and chemical reasons behind that. So the costs involved with that, Anthony will have the numbers on that, to change the intake would, you know, probably be, I think, in the quarter million dollar range?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. But does that necessarily mean that that's the final solution, right? Maybe not, because we'll have, we'll have reduced iron and manganese levels in our intake, but it doesn't mean that, that they're eliminated, okay? It's not eliminated. And we have to think that the plant itself was not originally built to handle iron and manganese, okay? It was never, it was never made that way. So we have been, you know, we're dealing with the hand we're dealt, and now, so we've, Anthony's taken a variety of steps over the years to try, to do his best to address with what we have on, on site. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And he's made some strides, but it didn't mean, it doesn't mean that it's eliminated. We now know we have to take some extra steps, right?
Yeah.
Now, and now we have to always keep in mind, too, that, that that's just a small part of the solution, the rest of the solution is that our distribution piping has become rather aged, and, and it's actually harboring.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So that's why whenever there's a disturbance in this system, well, of course, then, then there's certain areas of town, and I could probably predict where those samples came from.
Yeah.
And it's in the older sections of town, then inevitably we get some, we get some coloration, right? So.
I guess, not to cut you off, but just to ask for, like, okay, so you're stating it could possibly be 250,000, or 1,000 for the intake pipe to be raised up and whatnot, or something like that?
Yeah, you know what, I'll go through what I've got, and, and I kind of go through the pros and cons of a few different scenarios kind of thing, right? So should I just do that now, or go through that?
If that would be fine with you.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's all about the water, so, sure.
Okay, cool. So, okay, so there's two issues, or two options that we can use to deal with the manganese, manganese issue. Both these options have benefits and, and consequences, right? At this point, we're not favoring one option over the other, but rather looking for direction on how to move forward. So the one system is a chlorine dioxide system. So the benefits of this system are to, you know, the addition of chlorine dioxide oxidize 100% of the iron and 100% of the manganese prior to the filters, so we can remove 100% of it. The amount of post-chlorine required will be reduced slightly due to, you know, the, the organics and, and other things being oxidized.
At the same time.
At the same time. Chlorine dioxide is also known to oxidize taste and odors within the water, so there may be some advantages to this in the summertime, especially, right?
Right.
When it gets a little more, you know, bad taste in the water. Chlorine dioxide oxidizes organics and THM precursors, so THMs stands for trihalomethanes, it's a byproduct of adding the chlorine. So it oxidizes the precursors, so we'll actually have a reduction in THMs. Ontario regulation is talking about reducing that number, so we'll be ahead of the game. By limiting iron, manganese completely, the life of the distribution system will be extended. Efforts and costs related to elevated levels of iron and manganese in the distribution system will be reduced. So this may be in the form of flushing, sampling, public relations, and maybe in, other indirect costs, right? So, so those are some of the benefits of this chlorine dioxide, some of the consequences. The installation of chlorine dioxide will likely be close to about 200,000. We can get a more accurate price if that's kind of the direction that we want to go.
Okay.
The byproducts of chlorine dioxide is chlorate and chloride, which is the regulated, which is regulated. The system produces, if the system produces in excess of one milligram per liter of chlorate or chloride, then we'll have to go and install a system to remove that stuff.
Remove that stuff, yeah.
Additional chemical costs and generating system will be required on-site, which increases the complexity of the plant. There will also be an increase in chemical costs. We plan to have approximate chemical costs for this at a later date, maybe May 16th, and I also plan to visit a few sites that have this system in place already, so I can kind of wrap my head around it.
Okay, yeah.
So loose costs relating to this, about 200,000 for the chlorine dioxide system. If we find that chlorates and chlorites are an issue, we'll probably look at another, at least 200,000, in order to remove those chlorates and chlorites from the water.
So we could just say 500,000, just make it?
Yeah, yeah.
So as council, Town of Kirkland Lake, do we have that money right now to, like, let's just say?
Well, I guess to be, to give you a quick answer is, we don't know what if that's going to solve the problem, I mean.
Well, no, but this is a great solution, right?
Yeah, and I think, right now, I think we're talking, we're discussing this at a very high level, and I think, in order to move forward with, I've got another option I'll go through in a minute, but if we want to move forward to this, we need to get engineering involved, and then they will take that further, right? So right now, this is very high level, and engineering is the next step.
This has been, all this information has been in contact with our engineering group, and we have a process optimization group as well.
Okay.
At Aqua, Aqua's, we're the best in the business, so when we see something like this, we have the people to find the solutions.
Okay.
I think councillor Morgan had a?
Yeah, just for the record, first of all, we're hearing all of this for the first time tonight, okay? So there were, and I have none of this in front of me, so making decisions on this is not going to happen in any way, shape, or form tonight, so.
Oh, no, I'm not saying a decision, I'm just saying, do we have the money for that? So let's just say?
But this all, we don't make decisions in isolation like that. I mean, it all, it's all part of the overall budget and, and the overall?
In our budget, do we have that?
It's not budgeted for this year, no, it's not.
So it's not, so it wouldn't be done this year then, is what you're saying?
So in order to even make this move, Michelle, we have to go through the Ministry of Environment, we have to go through Departments of Fisheries, we have to go through the MNR, we have to get approvals and all this kind of stuff, and then we have to get an environmental assessment. That in itself is an eight-month process. So we have to wait until Aqua's going to have a proposal, a proposal even to investigate further, because the town and the council cannot make a decision, say, okay, let's try it. A lot has to be done before we even get there, so.
No, no, I understand that. I just, I guess what I'm, I think it sounds really great, and it sounds very promising, which is a little bit more than what we've been given, so that's great. I just want to know, for the Town of Kirkland Lake, the people, do we have that money readily available if this solution seems from the engineers that it would probably, you know, 100%, it would work? Do we have that available?
Well, again, we don't know what the, like, we have to listen to the process and then it's budgeted for. If, I guess, I mean, I can only speak for myself. If, if, if I thought $400,000 would solve the brown water problem in Kirkland Lake, it would be a no-brainer.
Okay.
But we don't know if that'll do it, that's the.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying, do we have monies available for such solutions that would probably make a huge difference with our, I mean, this is disgusting, really? It's, it's revolting.
I, I couldn't disagree with you.
And I'm not saying that you're not doing your job or anything, I'm just saying that, you know what, it's really, it's awful.
Yeah, and the worst part is, the worst part is, it's a hit and miss, like, it's in your home, but it's not in my home.
That's right.
It's in maybe your home, but not in Jim's home, and that's the hit and miss, right?
Well, ironically, Michelle, you had it once and I didn't.
I know.
You know what I mean?
And my sister's had it, and I haven't had it, or vice versa. No, I'm just saying, we shouldn't have this period. There should be no brown water.
So even when, okay, so in a perfect world, you're right. Even when, even when a solution is sought and decided on, and, and we move forward, we still have to remember that we have about 40% of our pipes in our, in our system that are old.
Right.
We will see hits.
So with?
We will see hits, it will never be a total elimination, there's not a town in North America that has total elimination, right?
So with, with the piping, that I know some of it is back to 1920, are there any plans to have that changed?
Well, there's, of course, there's always been plans with the piping, I mean, since I've been in, sitting in this chamber since 2003, and other councillors longer. You know, the town has always did a project every year, and, and we've done it through, through, basically getting money from the province, and, and using provincial money, where the province pays 90%, and the taxpayers pay 10%.
Right.
There's no community that would, I don't believe, even consider paying 100% of infrastructure, because they couldn't do it. You, you could do one full, one full street, and then you got a $400,000 payment for the next 30, 30 years. So you have to do it when you leverage provincial money, and yes, of course, and most recently, you know, our Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the Wood Street project is, is directly heading our engineering department up to McAlvy, McCam, us very bad areas.
Right, yes.
But you can't just do McAlvy without doing Phase 1 and 2 and 3 to get there, because the water flows different ways. So yes, we are, and we have been doing it every year, and if other councillors want to expand on that, please feel free.
I, I just think that, I just think, and I don't mean to bring this up, but I, it's important, I believe, it's like, we wait for provincial gov, funding to have infrastructure done, and I get that, I totally get that.
Yeah, certainly not, not just Kirkland Lake.
No, no, no.
Every municipality.
Like, who wants to pay that, right? I understand that. However, my understanding is that a loan is being taken out for our pool, right? That we're paying for.
Of course.
But yet?
Somebody has to pay for it, yes.
Yes, right, but yet we have this.
No, but there's, you can't put them in the same discussion, because.
Well, you kind of can, because like, from our, from our side.
From my point of view, I can't, unless council would like to comment on this, I'll keep babbling away.
From the people's, from the people's perspective here in Kirkland Lake.
What is a capital project that's going to last all the users of our community for the next 30 years?
Oh, I, I.
And, and all the, all the, going forward, those people are also going to be paying for the, for the pool. If you, so the other is, is just building and working on the road, and you need provincial money. To take out, say, a $13 million loan to do McCamus, that's what it would take, probably, to do McCamus. It's 500,000 a year payment for the next 30 years, and you've got one street, and then what happens? The next year?
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
So you can't compare them in the same, that, that's okay on Facebook, that's okay in, in social media, but in the council chamber, you can't, you can't compare them both. Councillor Kylie?
Yeah, Michelle, I'm not skipping with the pool part, but going back to what Anthony was saying, the $400,000 cost to switch to this chlorine dioxide system, if it's proven that it would make a significant difference. I, I think it's fair to say, Mayor Antonio Ozzy, that we would find the money.
Of course.
It, it's a priority item, there's no question about that.
Okay, well, that's reassuring.
Yeah.
But as long as. When we get into 10, 12 million dollars, that's another issue, no question about that.
So, so let's hypothetically, let's just say, for an example, this solution number one doesn't work, so we're on to solution number two, which is about $5 million.
I don't know what solution.
There is no solution, one and two. We, we are not going to start on a solution unless we've done the homework and we've proven it's going to work, right? That's why, that's why it's not something that's going, okay, by August, we're up and running. We, we have to make sure that we're not going to get caught in 2019, and now I have to come to council and say, oh, by the way, we have to spend another 500 on this or that, right? Otherwise, we look foolish. The solution that we present to council, and council finally gives the green light to do, to go with, is going to be a proven solution.
Right.
Okay?
Yes, I, I understand that, and I agree with that. I'm just saying, let's just say, for an example, this solution is now going to be, you know, 2, 3, 4, 5 million dollars. Do we have that?
You mean, do we have it right now?
Yeah.
No, obviously not.
So could we take a loan out for that, to get it fixed?
Well, if they come up with a solution, and it's going to guarantee then, council, well, of the day, of the day, we'll have to decide whether it's this council or the next council, that'll be a decision for each individual person sitting at these tables. And really, that's why you elect seven people to make those decisions on behalf of the town. But of course, I, I can only say again that, you know, turning that water into that water on your right is definitely what every person at this table would like to see.
Yeah.
And, and, and we've been going forward for that, you know, it's just it doesn't happen overnight.
No, I, I know it doesn't happen overnight, I know you guys are working, I know everybody's working hard on it.
Yeah, nobody likes that.
I mean, it would be awesome if it could, you know, we had the solution, and tomorrow, and boom, let's, let's get it going, but unfortunately, it takes time, I get that.
But what I can really assure you is that Aqua is trying to come up with a solution, they're using all the experts that they have to help us come up with a solution. Once they believe that they have, then they'll present it to this table, and then a decision can be made.
So, so if they do have a solution that looks very promising, and it might be super expensive, we're good to go with that then?
Well, you'd have to ask each individual person, I can only give you my, my, I think councillor Kylie was first.
Yeah, Eric, I guess, what would be the timeframe to get all this testing done and background information done before you can present it to council? I guess that's.
Yeah, perfect. So, so as you know, two weeks from now, our engineer, Simma Saud, is going to be here to present, and he's going to give, he's going to couple on top of what's been already done, and we will have some high-level, high-level decisions for you, and to go forward from there, okay? So two weeks from now, we present a little more about it. Probably another two weeks following that, we will have a report and proposal for council, okay? From that point, council will, will decide, okay, what are we going to do, and what's going to be the best course of action, okay?
So like the end of May-ish?
So, end of May-ish.
Sorry, councillor Morgan.
I guess to kind of, you know, distill this down, at the end of the day, if there's a solution at hand, council will find the money.
Okay.
That's, there's no connection between what else we've spent money on and what, you know, needs to be done here. If, if Aqua comes back to us with a proper solution, and we will continue to work through this process, the council of the day will find the money to fix the problem.
Okay.
That's, that's a given, because we did it with the sewage treatment plant when it collapsed, I mean, we didn't sit around and go, you know, maybe, you know, that's a lot of money, it's like, no, it's what it cost, we figured out how to do it, we did it. Water treatment plant, like Kirkland Lake has actually, and I, I know this is going to be hard to believe in the context of what we're discussing tonight, but Kirkland Lake has been way ahead of the curve on dealing with our infrastructure. After Walkerton, it became very clear that most municipalities, not most, but a lot of them, and that's where Aqua was created, was post-Walkerton. A lot of municipalities shirk their responsibility in dealing with clean water, and they just, you know, they were just chucking and jiving, and, you know, bobbing and weaving, and it was like, by the grace of God, they had clean water coming out to their, their residents. Kirkland Lake didn't do that. We went ahead and we built a new water treatment plant and a new pumping station, and then all of a sudden, all these other municipalities got funding for their water treatment plants because they had been, you know, delinquent, and here we were, paying for ours.
Okay.
That was very frustrating.
Right.
And Eric alluded to it earlier, that, yes, 40% of our infrastructure is still old, but 60% of it is very modern.
Okay.
So if you look, and I mean, we have the benefit of going to municipal conferences where we talk to other municipalities, and the reality is, is that Kirkland Lake is much further ahead on our infrastructure deficit than most of the municipalities, Toronto included. Toronto is one of the biggest laggards when it comes to replacing their infrastructure. I mean, we're dealing with this problem now, everybody is taking this very, very seriously. When we do find a solution, and these guys aren't going home at night forgetting about it, I mean, you guys live and breathe this every day, when the solution comes, and they will work through the process, we will find the money to fix the problem.
Okay.
Or the next council will. I mean, I can't give you an exact timeline, because we don't know what that timeline is.
Well, no, and like Eric said, it's, it's a bit of a process, and you've got to go through.
I work with many, many councils across northeastern Ontario, this is a very forward-thinking council, that town, oh yeah.
I, I just think, I just think it's probably been maybe not so transparent as far as what everything has been done, and how it's been explained today is fantastic, I think most people in Kirkland Lake will hopefully understand that now. I, I have a better understanding, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to, like I said, I just wanted to make sure that we've got funding for this, if there is a, a proper solution, that is, like you say, 100% guaranteed, this is the way to go, and, and we're going to do it. Just because when we flip it over and you look at the pool, which I know we need, I, I was one of the first kids in the pool, I, I get it, but it's just when you look at that, and then you go to turn on your water, and you're getting this, it's like, seriously? I'd rather pay, you know, $14 million in a loan to have our whatever fixed, so that the pool will be postponed whenever. That, that's all we're trying to say.
And, and I'm going along with, with your way of thinking as well, and, and what I can tell you that the town will do is we'll continue to, to do our infrastructure work. We're sort of 50% approved on the clean water wastewater fund, which would allow us to do omira, you know, all, everything underneath will be changed, so that, that's another getting towards, you know, we've done about 60%, so, and next year, hopefully, we'll get funding for Phase 3 for the Wood Street, that'll get us up to McAlvy, and then hopefully the next year, we'll get funding to do McAlvy. So, but everything takes, takes so much time, takes so much time.
And, and the town and the council has been very, you used the word transparent, we've been very, very transparent. It was a decision made by Aqua and, and the town, the mayor and council not to participate in the, in the Facebook, just to, just to present facts as we were asked to come and present facts.
Yeah, and I, I'd have to, that's me that did that, but I was, anyways, I posted a picture in January because I was really ticked off, and it just kind of flew from there. But I think it just, it sort of, it sort of tells everybody how upset people are.
And that God is here today, didn't it?
That's right, yeah, and, and as far as, I think it's great that we phoned the town hall, but I think it's just, you know, people are tired of doing that now. I know I had done it.
But it's, it's the way that.
It's the way to do it, I, I understand that, I think just people are like, ugh, why even bother, it's iron and manganese. You know, last year was frost, the year before it was frost, so I think they just give up.
Yeah.
But it's, but.
I know, but it also does.
We welcome the calls, we need the calls, because we cherish that information.
Right.
The council, the town, we cherish that information, we need that, right? So it's, that's why we have the systems in place when the calls can make it that way.
And we, and I did say, please call.
Yeah, please, please encourage them. Councillor Barker?
No, I think that when you said the lack of transparency, I think it's more a communication issue, that we need to communicate more what we're doing for the water, and, and that's something we've been working on as a council for the last little while, is improving communications, it's great to hear, we, we see where we can improve, and now we're going to work on improving on that as well, getting the information out to let you know what we're doing, how we're going about doing it, because all this time, we have been working on rectifying the brown water situation, just may, may not have made it to the public's domain, so I appreciate your insight on.
That, that's, I think that's the most important, I probably didn't use the right word, so yeah, communication would be great, I think, because if, if you don't go to YouTube, you don't see the council meetings, and if you don't get the paper, you know, I think if we, if it was just a little bit more communicated better, I guess.
Totally agree, thank you for that.
No, it isn't, it's against our, the rules of, the clerk would be able to.
Well, yeah, so I laid out the one, one of the options, I've got a second option I was going to lay out, so I'll just, it's okay.
Anthony, your, your microphone's on, eh, just to make sure we're getting it recorded.
Can you hear me?
No, well, just the green light's on?
Yeah, it's on, yeah, yeah, sorry, guys. Okay, so the, the second option is the water intake pipe extension, and we spoke a little bit about that last time, I think. So benefits of this guy is there's no long-term operational costs, capital costs may be lower, but it's a little bit complex, I'll go ahead and add a little bit later on, it's a little bit lower than a chemical installation, and it's, it's a little bit simpler. Consequences, extension of, of the intake pipe may cause some unpredictable water quality issues in summer months, so higher turbidities due to surface water. This concern was brought up by our, by our engineer, and so we really have to note those risks. Pulling water from higher levels in the summer months will result in increased water temperature to the consumer also, so that, that's a concern. A possibility of increased taste and odor in summer months is a possibility. One way to overcome this is to design a water intake that can pull from both the upper level and the lower level of the lake. This feature would drastically increase the capital cost. With the raising of the water intake, the best possible, possible scenario shows manganese levels at an average of 0.015 milligrams per liter. So that's a significant reduction from the present 0.127, so it's, it's quite a reduction from the wintertime, but it's, it's typical what we see right now in the summertime, you know, with that, with that pipe change. So, so this, this is not perfect, this is, you know, it'll be a reduction in the wintertime, but it's, it's not perfect. uh, you know, it'll be a reduction in the wintertime, but it's, it's not perfect. If we attempt to oxidize remainder of the above-mentioned manganese, uh, in the, uh, water plant with chlorine, there's a risk that we could increase PHMs. So even though we're, we're getting a reduced amount of manganese at a higher level, we still can, there can still be some side effects if we try to deal with that. Um, costs related to this, um, to build an intake with the ability to pull from a lower and higher level, we're likely looking at the three hundred to four hundred thousand dollar range. And this is because of permitting, design, and issues related to working within the water. It's, uh, you know, so to move forward, either option, uh, we need to get engineering involved. So like I said before, this is very high level, and, uh, you know, I, I, I guess we're probably looking for a direction, which direction council wants to move in, right?
Climate change is upon us, so let's say we do that option, and the lake changes more, now what? Right? So this is where we have to be very careful, and we almost have to become genies and, and predict what's going to happen six years from now and sixteen years from now as well, right? So, so therefore, the solution we find, you know, we have to think that it's going to be good for fifteen or twenty years.
Right.
Yeah, and that, that's certainly why we have you contracted, to use your expertise. Counselor Kylie.
Yeah, Anthony, uh, you mentioned intake pipe extension. Uh, so it's not, you can't, is, is it, I guess what I'm thinking of, can you not just lift the, the elevation of it up without extension?
Well, we looked at that. We considered that. So if you look at the, the intake pipe structure, it's just basically, um, it's a cement base, and on top of that, there's kind of a fiberglass, uh, intake structure. There's a flange right there. We could elevate that by just insta, installing, um, uh, like a, kind of just, you call it a spool, and so you'd, you would increase that. But, uh, what we're concerned about is the intake quality of the water in the summertime, right? So we, there may be issues related to that. So, I mean, to, to extend, you, you can do it, but it's, we may run into other issues. That's what we're kind of afraid of right now, right? So that, so basically what, what can happen here is if we're pulling water from the lake and, for example, turbidities are increasing and, uh, and the water becomes a little more unpredictable, predictable, it may be more difficult and cause some other treatment issues in the plant, right? So it may cause more callouts. It may cause instabilities in the water.
So is it fair to say that option one so far looks a little more promising than, than the second one? I mean, that's preliminary. I understand that.
Yeah. The option number one is going to remove everything. It will remove all the iron and manganese. It'll be gone, and there won't be any, um, like I said, with the pipe extension, no matter what, you're going to be ha, you're going to be having iron and manganese coming into the plant. With option, uh, with the, um, with the chlorine dioxide option, it's, it's taking absolutely everything out of there.
Thank you.
What sounds good? Uh, just...
Uh, sorry, Counselor Mino.
Well, so far I'm not hearing a solution that's going to fix the problem entirely. So when, when I reach that impasse as a councillor, then I think this table usually directs staff, in this case Aqua and Anthony, to, uh, bring back a report that's going to give us that solution. And I think, judging by your presence here, uh, you probably want some reassurance. You, you want some commitment. And so if this table said to staff, or give a direction through either a motion or through a direction to staff, then would formalize what you're looking for tonight, and it would put these guys to do their homework, and they would bring back a report to us, and at which point finances and the details of it could be discussed because, uh, traditionally, this council works on reports to council. So we've had all these reports. You, you've heard the KPMG report. Well, obviously, that was one report that we based, uh, our decisions on expert knowledge. Well, once these people and the team and the engineers bring back something forward, we could probably act on that one thing. The same thing with Swastika, uh, changeover. We, we acted on a, a report which told us the solution. It told us that, um, it was more viable to have it that way instead of re-changing everything, pipe and, you know. So there was a lot of advantages, but that's only after we heard the report, and then we acted on it, and obviously, it's, it's in the works now, and that's, it's a costly one, but it's a solution that's more certain for you and me as taxpayers.
Right.
So if, if a direction is needed tonight, I would certainly endorse a direction to tell staff to pursue a study of this and bring back to council for, for action later on.
I think that would be, I, I think that would be, well, I have no vote, but I'm just saying, I think that's a good idea. Uh, just because I kind of forgot to mention, a lot of people are, of course frustrated, you know, they've had to change toilets, they've had to change things, the laundry's being ruined. Uh, you know, I just did a, a wash this weekend, eighty dollar sweatshirt. It's in the garbage now. You know, it's just, it's maddening, I guess, and so...
Sometimes I wish I got brown water.
So, uh, I think that's, that's it for me.
Okay, Joanne is, uh, writing up something, though, and, uh, so maybe we could do that. Any other comments, Counselor?
This would be more of a, oh, yes, Counselor Morgan. Just, just in all fairness to Aqua, though, I mean, I think that was your intent, was to continue on and bring a report to council. We're just sort of doing the thirty thousand foot view tonight to...
Yeah.
Give you an update on, on where they're at. I mean, I don't think, I mean, I assume they were...
They would, they would do it anyways.
But just to formalize this, is that, that's fine with council?
Well, I think this, as Michelle was saying about the communication, this updates us that Aqua hasn't been sitting around on their thumbs doing nothing.
No, and I think people need to hear that and, and see, like, you know...
A little more encouraging that, don't take this the wrong way, Eric, but we've heard what's been causing the problem all along, but we didn't hear much on solutions. Tonight, I think we have, at least we have some options that we're looking at.
That look promising.
That's what we want to hear. So, appreciate the work you're doing.
Yes, thank you so much.
Joanne's gonna...
Uh, so this is the resolution, that council has received the verbal report from Michelle Short, and council directs Aqua to bring back a report, um, to do a report, to bring back the best option to reduce the brown water issue in Kirkland Lake.
Is that fine with everyone?
And with that solution, if it's promising, we'll go ahead with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just my last name's Hasty, that's my, it's, no worries, no worries. It's all good. I just go by Hasty in case, like, this is formal, so...
So all in favor of that resolution? Oh, sorry, okay.
So that, uh, the motion is moved by Counselor Mino and seconded by Counselor Morgan.
All in favor? Thank you.
Did you want this off?
Do you turn it off every time?
Yeah.
It, it doesn't matter. It'll come up. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you very much. We have the acceptance of the minutes and recommendations.
It's moved by Counselor Mino and seconded by Counselor Barker. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The special meeting of council held April eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, the regular meeting of council held April eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, and the regular meeting of council held April nineteenth, two thousand seventeen.
All in favor? Gary, thank you. Reports of municipal officers and communications. Counselor Mino, you're going to update us on the, uh, resolution of the DSAB reserves?
Uh, thanks. Last meeting, I, I, I summarized the report that Counselor Morgan and myself were doing on behalf of the DSAB representation for Kirkland Lake, and I, I had put a notice of motion about, um, soliciting, uh, the, uh, DSAB to release some of the unspecified funds that they have. And so, um, there's a motion tonight that it's going to be asking that. I mean, there, you've got it before you. There's a rationale behind it. It's not the rationale of the whereas that's important here. It's, there's three things I wanted to, to raise today is, first of all, we want to start a conversation with the other municipalities. There's twenty-three municipalities in Temiskamane. There's two unorganized territories, and those twenty-three municipalities are represented by nine members. So it's the twenty-three municipalities that have to be heard here in terms of, uh, how those funds are expensed or how at least are dealt with. So what I'm, I want to do today is raise that awareness and raise also, uh, uh, the, the awareness with each municipality through this motion so that Joanne would send them a copy, uh, after this meeting if you so approve it. Um, the reason said is because the DSAB, uh, works on a, um, standalone sort of, uh, situation. It's very political, and so, for instance, uh, one representative might represent seven of those municipalities. Now, uh, if you go to, if you go to a vote at the DSAB, you're going to have, uh, nine or, uh, yeah, nine votes. And so that nine votes doesn't mean it's all twenty-three. It means that they're representing seven or eight municipalities each elector or each voter in that thing. So I think it's very important for me and for Kirkland Lake to, to impress upon the other municipalities, if you wish to have a, a discussion about the reserve funds that are there and that you might want to express your, uh, willingness to actually access them, then you should actually get in touch with your member, uh, of, uh, representation, uh, for on the DSAB. Kirkland Lake, it's Todd and I, so that's quite clear. But like, uh, if you're in Inglehart, you have to speak to Claire Mullapoint. If you're in Harley, you have to speak to a Cliff Fielder or something like that. So that's where we have to have this communication, uh, to take place. If I look at the, uh, last year, this was brought up, it was defeated, and, um, when you look at the, the sort of, uh, distribution of that vote, you realize that, uh, fourteen municipalities are probably in favor of this. And you also realize that of those fourteen municipalities, that probably encompasses more than fifty percent. The DSAB does have a standing, uh, operational, um, procedure that, uh, if they were to change something of that nature, for example, uh, the billing, because we get billed according to a certain formula, there's four different billings, and so if you were to do that, you'd have to have the double majority. I think in this instance, we're very close to that number, and therefore I would like to impress upon the, the DSAB that that's what the wishes of the municipalities are. So, um, that's why I want this motion to, to go ahead and, and be circulated because at least they'll know that, uh, that, uh, it's a widespread sort of, uh, interest in accessing. We have no decision as to the amount. We have no decision as to the vote. We do have in, political influence, and we do have needs. Uh, I'm not going to rehash everything I said last time, but, um, if, uh, if, if a small municipality gets to access fifty, sixty thousand, well, maybe they can buy themselves a vehicle that they've been waiting for, and they don't have it in their reserve. So, you know, it's, it's that nature of, uh, benefit that these reserves could have, and if you look at the, the interest that they generate, well, if you don't have any use for it, uh, then just leave it in the bank and generate your own interest versus the DSAB generating the interest. So there's, there's a lot of factors involved into why we want it, but that's not as, as important as to, with the DSAB listening to what the municipalities want. So there's a motion here, I believe, uh, it's been moved already and seconded in the Mayor, Tony?
Yes.
So I, I'm, I would certainly, uh, impress upon council to adopt this motion.
Okay, thank you for that.
So it's moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Mino. Whereas the District of Temiskamane Social Services Administration Board is funded by twenty-three member municipalities with two territories without municipal organization within the, the Temiskamane District, and whereas DSAB has specified reserves for items such as replacement of emergency vehicles, social housing, and employee benefits, and whereas DSAB has very large unspecified reserves, and whereas DSAB has in the past drawn from the unspecified reserves, which have been used to offset increases in the annual municipal budgets, and whereas now, as whereas this drawdown does not accurately reflect the cost of DSAB services to municipalities, and whereas DSAB has the ability to debenture and does not need to put money aside for large capital expenditures, and whereas DSAB is funded completely by other levels of government and has virtually no risk of any non-payment, and whereas DSAB has programs that are very prescriptive and predictable. Now therefore, the council of the town of Kirkland Lake petitions the board of DSAB to return a significant portion of the unspecified reserve amount to the twenty-three member municipalities, and that this resolution is forwarded to the board of DSAB, the Temiskamane Municipal Association, the Mayor's Action Group, and twenty-three member municipalities.
All in favor? Gary, unanimous? Thank you, uh, councillor. Assessment appeal settlements. Jen, you're going to come up and speak to that?
Um, good evening. Um, we've all been aware that there's been lots of large appeals, uh, in the past, you know, five years or so, that we've, haven't been happy that we've had to repay about, repay back to, um, certain commercial and industrial properties. So in the beginning of March, um, I get the same CTO legislative express or one of these communications, and a headline came out at me that, uh, the city of Thunder Bay was not agreeing to sign the minutes of settlement, um, because they are going to be forced to pay back in the millions of dollars, uh, for large commercial reassessments, as well as they have, uh, grain elevators out there. So I took it upon myself to, well, let's call the city of Thunder Bay and see, um, where they're going with this and, and what's going to come out of it. So I spoke with their manager of revenue, and, um, so they are not signing the minutes of settlement. Uh, there's been lots of discussions with these large, uh, box store properties, you know, they've, they've appealed their assessments. It's gone to the ARB. The ARB's made a decision that, oh, we've come to an agreement that, yes, your assessment should be reduced from, say, the five million down to four million because of some changes in, uh, methods of assessment. Um, and then they issue minutes of settlement for, uh, the property owners to sign, the M-PAC, and then the municipality. So it's come back to the municipality to, do you agree with this? Sign the minutes of settlement. So the city of Thunder Bay, uh, once they received all of these minutes of settlement back, you know, calculated that this is going to be in the millions of dollars, and, and they're disagreeing to sign the minutes of settlement. So by them disagreeing to sign, uh, or not agreeing to sign the minutes of settlement, it's not, um, they're not stopping the ARB process because under the ARB, uh, legislation, you have to have two parties that sign the minutes of settlement and then it will go forward. They're just sending a message to M-PAC indicating that we're not happy with these large assessment appeals that are happening all the time. Uh, we understand that this will still continue on and we will probably get the decision back from ARB that, yes, you will still be forced to pay out those millions. But they want it to be known that, you know, M-PAC, we're not happy with all this that's happening, uh, and, and we hope that you'll take this as a message and maybe reconsider at the ARB level that this doesn't happen year after year. I mean, they're going back four years and, and our, one of our current commercial assessments is going back eight years, and we all know on our budgets, that's eight years of taxation that we've already levied and spent in our operational and capital budgets, and it's, uh, places undue hardship on us when we have to all of a sudden repay that back in one year from eight years. So I'm recommending, um, that, you know, we do the same. Uh, when I spoke with the lady, she says I wasn't the first person to call her to kind of discuss, uh, what the city of Thunder Bay was doing and that she has spoken. There are a few other municipalities that are coming along the same lines. Um, there, we do have, you know, these options that, yes, we can sign the middle to settlement and agree with, uh, M-PAC and ARB about their, uh, decisions on the assessment appeals. Uh, we can object to it and file with ARB. Then it would be up to us. Uh, I certainly don't have the expertise and knowledge, so we would need to hire somebody in that situation to represent us and maybe go further. However, they've already taken it to ARB, so they've already kind of have a good idea of, yes, we've agreed to these new assessments, what potentially could we change at that point. Or my, uh, recommendation is that we refrain from signing these metal of its, minutes of settlement. The ARB will still take its course, but we're just sending a message to M-PAC that, um, we're not agreeing with these, uh, uh, changes in assessment. So that's my, uh, recommendation, and, um, unfortunately, before I had read this, uh, one communication, um, just because as we've always done, I didn't know that there was any difference. We have already signed one minute of, minutes of settlement and returned that to, um, ARB. Um, however, I'm recommending that any future, um, minutes of settlement, should they have a, a large adverse impact on us financially, that we don't agree to sign these and send that strong message to M-PAC.
Counselor Morgan.
I don't have any objection to what you're saying at all, Jennifer. Um, the, I think, you know, we've, we've mentioned it many, many times around this time. The, I think, you know, we've mentioned it many, many times around this table, that M-PAC is really a joke for all intents and purposes. It doesn't matter how fair your assessment is to begin with, if you appeal it, you're gonna get something. And M-PAC does not support, ever, their assessment of what they assessed in the first place. So, you know, their process is broken, and they don't support it, and yet, you know, they don't seem to care about the ramifications to municipalities, like you said, you know, really, appealing taxes back eight years, that's ridiculous, and yet, these things are going through. And, I mean, you know, I know that we're not gonna get anywhere with this, like, it's not gonna, you know, get us the dollars, but, you know, somebody has to make the point that it's kind of like these ambulance chaser lawyers. There's all kinds of firms out there, I think they're like, almost like paralegals or something, that basically take on these cases pro bono, and because they know that they're gonna get something back from every single appeal. And so these companies just, it's like a matter of process, it's like, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, because something's gonna, gonna get accomplished, and that person is gonna get paid, and, you know what, everybody's happy. Well, not everybody's happy, and the municipalities are the ones that are facing the brunt of this. And, we pay M-PAC a significant amount of money to give us reliable information, and they don't. It's a joke, and, you know, I would even be in favor of withholding their fees, but I mean, you know, that's probably beyond our capacity. But certainly, I have no use for M-PAC, I think they do a lousy job, they've only recently made any effort to correct the gross imbalance here in Kirkland Lake, and it's still bass ackwards. So, anyways, there's my two cents.
Councilor Minow?
I agree with you, Councilor Morgan. I agree with you, Councilor Morgan, the M-PAC has been busy putting together their website and doing all those nice, beautiful things, but they have not got down to the process itself. We were consulted last year, I remember I responded, saying that, where is the municipal representation in every time you have a hearing? And we don't, do we get, do we get the opportunity to speak on behalf of these assessment?
Yeah, so we're forwarded, when it goes to the ARB decision, we're forwarded when the teleconference calls are, but you have to, if you don't sit in on that first one, and if you miss that first one, you're missing the communication for all of the rest of the ones. And there's been new recent changes in the ARB rules since the beginning of April, that further, that if you, if you don't get in on it right on from the get-go, you're gonna lose your spot in it, and M-PAC is just gonna carry on with that view.
Yeah, because you see, like, at the beginning, you know, we all complained, and we says, we'll give them time to get adjusted, they got over five million properties, so they say, to evaluate every year. But now we're into, what, our, maybe our fifteenth year, I don't know, whatever the M-PAC history is. So, my point is, when you have so many years of experience, you should become more precise and efficient in what you do. And if we keep on getting these reassessments based on what, you know, the economy and stuff like that, well, those are things that are beyond our control and beyond taxpayers' control. So, they need to look at how they do their process again. It's not, to me, it's not looking at the realities of municipal property tax assessment, they're just looking at a number of what your house and what your business is worth, and then anything that comes in to negate that is understood, and then they act on that. And it's like, well, you guys assessed it in the first place. That's what's upsetting. They're the ones that put a price tag to it, they're the ones that tell us that house or that business is that worth, and then when there's an assessment, oh, well, yeah, yeah, we'll give them the benefit of the doubt, something happened down the road. Well, we never get a chance as a municipality to either contest it, they should set a ceiling, but based on population, based on our budget. If we have a million dollars of appeals in this municipality, that's what, you know, ten percent of our budget maybe? If not more? Well, that's not fair to us. You know, and this is where the whole M-PAC system and the ARB, the Assessment Review Board, when they do this, and in complicity with the M-PAC, we're stuck paying the bill every time, and we pay it always after the fact. So, they need to look at their process, and they need to review it, and they need to look at how the municipalities are impacted by this, because it's, as far as I'm concerned, all they do is say, oh, you don't like your assessment, okay, they give, it's like an open door. And I don't like that. And I would support that you do not sign anything, and, you know, let's see what happens, but maybe down the road, this council and other councils could actually ask M-PAC to review their process again, because that consultation yielded absolutely nothing, as far as I'm concerned, last year when I answered it, there's no, there's nothing for the municipality again, because I was suggesting that we should be sitting on those things, and they should come to our municipalities, given that we pay a hundred and eight thousand dollars for that service. We never see them around here, it's always, you know, at the benefit of the appellant. So, yeah, I would say, don't sign.
Thank you. Councilor Kylie?
Yeah, I agree with Councilor Morgan and Councilor Minow. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, but I think when M-PAC did this last assessment, they might have looked at twenty properties. That might be, it might even be high. So, they sit at the desk, or they, at the computer, go through multiple listings, sales, and use that for all the comparables. If you have never been in the building, I don't know how, everything is different, let's face it. So, they don't have people out on the street looking at the properties to begin with, and that's part of what the process problem is, just using multiple listing sales is not the answer. I think you're right, we have to send them a message. I don't think it's gonna solve the issue, but if everybody does the same, they're gonna wake up and have to start listening, because as Todd said, to come back eight years later, how in the heck is a municipality gonna make up for that? We have no way of doing it.
Just the residential properties are mostly assessed on the current value assessment, so sales approach. The commercial, they have two different methods, I think that's the income approach and as well as the costs, but I mean, still, they're clearly able to refute their income testing approach if they're able to assess, or appeal their assessment all the time. So, the income approach that M-PAC is using to assess those commercial properties clearly differs when these commercial properties hire lawyers and poke holes at their income testing approach. So maybe they need to speak with these lawyers who are contesting them to better refine their income method in the commercial sector, to come up with a better value right from the get-go. So it can't be poked holes, or there can be no holes poked through it or appealed. But it's not just sales listings all the time for commercial industrial properties, there's other methods of valuation for those ones.
So, for an example, if, say, corporate-wise, this example, Tim Hortons appealed their taxes, it's for the whole corporation, and they would negotiate with M-PAC, say, for a three percent decrease. So, they don't physically go to each location, so every location would be hit with that three percent.
Yeah.
Every municipality.
Yeah, when these big, large box stores, like the Home Depots, the Canadian Tires, the Loblaw's, it's corporate headquarters who's doing the appeal on behalf of two, three hundred locations, and, yeah, they pull out a Tim Hortons location here and there, but they don't look at the specific land sales values of Kirkland Lake versus that of Toronto. They'll, you know, generalize the Northern Ontario or the Southern Ontarios, but not specific to each property. Which, they should, because they're valuing our community, and that's how we're raising our municipal tax dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
Resolution? It's moved by Councilor Minow and seconded by Councilor Barker, that council delegates to the Treasurer the authority to sign or not to sign assessment appeal minutes of settlement for commercial and industrial properties for previous taxation years, depending on whether it adversely affects the municipality.
All in favor? Carrie? Thank you.
Okay, so, coming up, May tenth to twelfth, is PHNOM, which is the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, and the Ministry of Municipal Affairs Conference, which is being held in North Bay. We are a member of PHNOM, and I'm just wondering if there's any councillors who would like to attend this, it's kind of short notice, but...
Councilor Kylie?
This is, we do need a resolution by council in order to allow the expenses to be paid and for council to go. So I have a motion, it's moved by Councilor Barker, seconded by Councilor Minow. The council approves the following members of council to attend the 2017 PHNOM MMA Conference, May tenth to twelfth in North Bay, and that would be Councilor Kylie. With expenses, yes.
All in favor? Carrie?
Okay, Police Week?
Okay, and this was a request that was brought through the Police Service Board, they're asking to declare Police Week. So I have a motion, it's moved by Councilor Barker, seconded by Councilor Minow. The council of the town of Kirkland Lake declares May fourteenth to twentieth, 2017 as Police Week in and for the town of Kirkland Lake.
Any discussion? Councilor Barker?
Just to elaborate a little bit on that, I think it's important to recognize our police force here in Kirkland Lake, they do a lot of stuff outside of their mandate, including community support, they're always out there at various events, helping to support our community and keeping it safe, so I thought it was very appropriate to recognize our police force here in this week and to thank everyone for their contributions. I know I've had a few students come up to me and tell me that they really do appreciate Sandro, the Communications Officer that's at the high school, and helping out with different issues, whether it be bullying or anything like that, that he's approachable, and they value his services there, so it's just a great testament to our police services here in the community.
Yep, certainly. Oh, Councilor Minow?
Just to add to that, and Sandro, I think, was part of a promotional campaign for recruitment, so, from the whole province side of things, so, just goes to show you that how, you know, implicated he is, and that has its repercussion on how probably headquarters saw that, and he got the nod as to, you know, to show off his sort of commitment and dedication. Congratulations to him at the same time.
For sure. All in favor? Thank you.
Council Code of Conduct and Integrity?
Okay, this comes back to you as a bylaw for you to be considered. But back in July 2016, council did approve their Code of Conduct, that is for council boards and committees, and at that time, staff was directed to advertise for the position of the Integrity Commissioner, who would oversee that Code of Conduct. Staff did bring back names to in-camera for applicants. It's been a really lengthy process with the candidates because of their own commitments and obligations, but at the last close meeting of April eighteenth, council did bring back, or did tell staff to bring back a bylaw appointing Michelle Loach as the Integrity Commissioner. There is a fee for this, the retainer fee is five hundred dollars for the first year, and then it's three hundred dollars for every subsequent year after that. That is just to keep her on retainer, and then there is fifty dollars an hour for all services that she provides for the town. So the Code of Conduct is the way that council and its boards and committees have vowed to conduct themselves. If there are any complaints that can't be informally taken care of, then they would be, the application to complain would go through Michelle, and she would take care of it from there. And there is a process that's all set out in the agreement as to how she would conduct herself. So that comes back as a bylaw later on.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Bonnie, the item number six for the farmer's market.
We've had a request from a lady who lives in the area to do a produce market or a farmer's market at the pavilion at the Civic Service Stadium. So I'll explain a little bit of a difference between what the two are, and this information comes from our local health unit. So if we are to entertain a farmer's market, a farmer's market must have fifty percent plus one of the vendors there that are growing their own foods on their own farms. If it's something that people are collecting from just area farms in the area, then it's more of a produce market. So a produce market would be produce, whereas a farmer's market could be more things like meat and eggs as well. So, in conversation with the health unit, they did explain to me that both are an option, just so that we know what the legalities are for those areas. A farmer's market, the food regulations do not apply, but they do follow the Ontario Farmer Markets Rules, so there is an association, and if we were to have an actual farmer's market, that those rules do have to be followed. If it is more of a produce market, which is what this lady has done similarly in the past, food regulations do apply, and if they are to add in things like meats and things like that, it does have to come from an inspected area. So when I was speaking with the health inspector, he did want me to relay that the health unit is a hundred percent supportive of these types of initiatives, as long as the regulations are followed, of course, they do support food security and fresh local food. A little bit more information about what the town involvement has been in the past, back in 2014, the Museum of Northern History did host an evening where they had food vendors. So they had eight vendors that attended, they had two-hundred-and-thirty people attend, they said it was their largest draw that they had in that summer. They did it in an evening in August, between five and eight P.M., and they were quite happy with the results, and they had, they've had a number of requests since then to offer something similar. I did a little bit more research, because I thought, if we were to take something like this on, we kind of, I'd like to know what other places do. So, there is a fairly successful, or quite successful, farmer's market that occurs in Timiscamine Shores, and we have to keep in mind, they're an agricultural community, we are not. So we aren't even talking near the scope, especially to begin, but I wanted to see how it's run, because it is run on community property. So they do their farmer's market at Riverside Place, it happens on Saturday mornings, they have food that's being served, as well as some of its arts and crafts, and obviously there's quite a lot of food and agriculture. For many years, they didn't charge at all, so they offered Riverside Place to the farmer's market. They, in the past couple of years, they have started to implement a fee, and they're charging one hundred dollars per Saturday morning, that they spread out amongst all the vendors. The vendors themselves are doing all of the organizing, they have a committee that comes, they organize it, they determine who's coming, they have a maximum capacity, they have a waiting list, they do their setup and their cleanup. So they don't, the town themselves don't incur expenses to try to get organized to do it. Joanne was able to share with me a little bit about our local Hawker and Pedler's licensing. So if we do have a farmer's market, our local bylaw does recognize that they would be exempt from getting a license, because it is a recognized farmer's market, lawfully operating with it in the town. So that's if they go the farmer's market route. So, at this time, we have, we have interest from someone outside of the community to do something. I've had a lot of response from community members who would love to see this sort of thing here. There may be local people who would like to participate, if we put it out there, I have not done the legwork on that, I wanted to see from council's perspective if this was something they would like to see the town take on, or if it's something we'd like to see left in the private sector.
Councilor Barker?
Bonnie, I love the initiative, but my thought is, it should be led by the private sector. Right now, we don't, Timiscamine Shores, they collect their taxes from farmers and other agricultural bodies, whereas here, we have grocery stores that pay a lot of taxes and compete, I understand, fair market value, but that's where I'd like to see either the Chamber of Commerce or other private sector groups come in and play more of a pivotal role. If there's any way that the community can help support that, I'd be more in favor than having it driven by the community, it's by Kirkland Lake, the corporation itself, I'd like to see outside group take care of this.
Councilor Morgan?
Yeah, I have similar sentiment, I mean, I'm always gonna be on side of letting the private sector run these things, I think that's certainly my preferred option almost all the time, unless it's something that's, you know, can be demonstrated that the municipality can run it more efficiently, or cheaper, or something like that. I'm always, you know, open to new approaches, but I love the idea, Bonnie, I really hope that we can get this off the ground, I think there is an interest in this kind of thing, but I'd much prefer if this lady ran the program and organized all those people and just left it all up to them. And, like you said, I mean, you know, certainly, I'd be willing to look at maybe something reduced in the first year, just to kind of let them get their feet under them, but, you know, I think, you know, some reasonable, I mean, what do we charge for the pavilion in the summertime, or have we even landed on a number?
We haven't done, we haven't done pricing yet for civic since it's been rehabilitated, so our prices in the past, where if you were to use the whole civic field, which really was a ball field before, an open space, if it was a nonprofit group, it was two-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars, that would be like festivals coming in for the day. And if it was a commercial group, then I think it was seven hundred dollars, so that would be, you know, if a rodeo or circus or something came and wanted to use it. So we haven't really done pricing on the pavilion, if you kind of compare it to room use at our facility, we will use our big multipurpose arts and crafts room at a hundred dollars a day. So, we've got some pricing that we could... So we've got some pricing that we could extrapolate from, but we, we, I would have to come back to council with, and I, and I will do that because we're going to have rentals.
Councillor Mino?
Yeah, I was, I'm glad you brought up option one because that's the one I was going to propose. We've had this discussion before, so I remember in pre-election time, that's what it was and because we were debating whether the usefulness of the, you know, the sports tourism strategy and this actually connects with the sports tourism strategy whereby you allow this to happen at a very low cost because it does bring in some spinoffs and stuff like that. So I would say let it go for a year and see what happens and, but you also mentioned that programming and youth payment, the program would be just what, organizing it and setting it up?
When, when I spoke to Shelley, what she's looking at doing is she would like to do healthy food option classes for perhaps Brighter Futures. Or she would like to, you know, if there's a kitchen available, do some cooking class. Like she just spoke to me very high level about things that they have done in the past. They've worked with, they've worked with Brighter Futures, they've worked with daycares, they've worked with a couple of other, I think, social service agencies to provide information on healthy food options and how to, how to prepare your foods that you're getting from the garden, those types of things. So that's what she was speaking about.
So in practical terms, this is somebody's backyard that brings in some potatoes and sells them because they're just fresh, organic, if you wish. And so that's, that allows that option for vendors to do it that way?
It could. I mean, it depends on, if, if we open the invitation to, we just, because we are in a bigger agricultural area, I'm not sure what the uptake would be, but we certainly may have some people. I mean, I know that, you know, from both ends of our, of our larger district, you know, the Matheson area and the Inglehart Earthen area, there are people doing this regularly. So if the invitation was there, whether they would come, I don't know. Only been approached by one individual.
I'd, I'd say my recommendation would be to go very liberal about it and lots of leeway as long as, you know, they understand about the cleaning up and, you know, some common sense things that they would take care of instead of throwing it back to the town where you have to send two people on Sunday.
Exactly.
Over time or something like that, you know, or, you know, make it clear to them if they go ahead and use the facility because that'd be excellent, create some traffic there and be some visibility. So, yeah.
Have, have we talked to any of the local businesses about this?
No, I haven't gone anywhere.
I'd like to see what, what they think of this as well. Like, you know, we have our YIGs and our, the other is Pronto, Metro, not Metro, Foodland, Foodland. I would hope they would participate as well.
When I spoke with Amber Lee...
But I think we have to bring them on board as well, to, you know, what their, what their thoughts are.
Yes. The, the, the local stores, some of them did participate, the one that the museum hosted in 2014 and I believe it was, it was well received, so, but, but I have not done that step.
Okay, but that, that'll be part of the process is to talk, okay. Councillor Kylie?
Yes, Tony, that was my concern too. This Ma and Pa operations, like Pronto, for example, he's got to compete with stores that are open twenty-four hours a day. They have baking goods, they have other advantages maybe that some stores don't have, but I think if, if, I, I love the idea. I, I want to see these smaller stores survive as well. I would support this on the condition that we make some kind of contact with the other commercial facilities in, in town, invite them to participate because otherwise you're going to get a lot of complaining. But at least by asking them to participate, they have the opportunity. I'd rather do that upfront than after the fact.
Yes.
Are you looking for direction from council?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the way that I had had it written up was the council approves farmer's market that's run by the Department of Community Services at Civic Park because that was the recommendation that was brought in. But my understanding is that you would like to take option one, that Bonnie would look in further into using the pavilion as a farmer's market by a private person, by the Northern Harvest with a confirmed programming, in lieu of payment? Is that the way that you'd like to see it go? Or did you want Bonnie to bring back more information? I don't, don't understand where, where you'd like to go from here.
Like, I guess one point I would ask is how much say would this Northern Harvest have is who comes? Like maybe Northern Harvest is going to say, no, you can't come. I mean, like are they going to control the whole thing or?
In my opinion, if, if our department was, was going to run with it, we would collaborate with them and make sure that it made sense and it was logical. I wouldn't want it to be exclusive. I don't think that's the intent at all. I think it's to be inclusive and, and as councillor Kylie said, we should be inviting people to come and participate. And I personally like the idea that councillor Mino said where for year one, keep it open, let's not have too many restrictives, see, see where it goes and maybe we can then evaluate after the summer how successful it was, if there were negatives that came along with it, what the numbers were like.
Because like Northern Harvest, they're a business, right? I think.
Northern Harvest, they are a group of farmers from the southern part of the district. They did use our greenhouse last year, the last few years they've been there. Shelley is a great person who does think outside the box and she would like to include the, the northern part of the district. She can only see this getting bigger. She'd like to see it turn into a real big farmer's market. She's aiming for the same thing as what Tumiskming Shores does, but she's not so sure that she'll get that kind of participating, participation, but she would love to see it open to anybody. That's the direction that she's been working on. So she's, right now, Northern Harvest is, is a group of farmers that she has brought together. She goes around and she picks up produce from them and brings them and sells shares to people who'd like to pick up. She's now added in a few farmers who do come themselves and there is a woman who does sell eggs from Metachol and I believe who comes in and sells things. So she's looking for a bigger place in order to grow this, make this a, a bigger event.
Councillor Kylie?
Joanne, she would be the go-to person to, as far as organizing this and putting it all together. As far as health regulations for like meat, we don't have to worry about that. It's up to Tumiskming Health Unit to do their inspections.
Correct.
So there's no liability for us. It's up to the, to the merchant or...
Yes, we, we would, we would work with, with the health inspector. When I was speaking with him today, he said absolutely and he's very aware of this particular business and what, and what she's been doing and he didn't have issues, but he would certainly make sure. And, and depending on which route we go, whether it's a produce market or the farmer's market, the regulations are slightly different, but he's very well aware of them, so we would work with Ray.
Well, it looks like she's going to have meat and vegetable sold.
That's her preference, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is that the farmer's market?
Well, it's the farmer's market if, if it's fifty percent plus one of all of the vendors that are there are selling their own goods, then it's a farmer's market. If it's just her, from my understanding, from my conversation with Ray, collecting the produce from the other farmers, then it's a produce market. And if she happens to sell meat, then he has to come inspected under the Food Act. The farmer's market's under the Farmer's Market Ontario Association. It's new to me too, so I'm, I'm learning as we go and it'll take a little bit of time and work with the health unit to make sure that we're following.
But it, it sounds like she's asking for both options combined.
I think it sounds like that as well.
It would probably be very difficult to get a farmer's market here in Kirkland Lake under the definition that, I mean, this lady seems to be looking for a place to sell some goods.
Yes.
And I'm in favor of that as long as all our local establishments have the availability to go there as well.
Okay, my understanding is you'd like to see it at state, try it for 2017 and then reevaluate it for next year. Is that okay? So I've written it, the council approves the use of the pavilion as a farmer's market by Northern Harvest for the year 2017. You don't want it under your direction, you would oversee it, but it wouldn't be under the direction of the community, Director of Community Services. I have that moved by councillor Mino and seconded by councillor Barker.
All in favor?
Sorry, the council approves the use of the pavilion as a farmer's market by Northern Harvest for 2017 overseen by the Director of Community Services.
The only thing I have difficulty in is putting that name of that company in there. Like they're getting, I know we should, we want to keep it in the private sector, but do we want to give that company or person the whole use of, like tie up the, that for the market or?
We can take it out and just say that council approves the use of the pavilion as a farmer's market.
I would say take it out because we're, we're gonna, we're giving Bonnie direction to pursue the idea.
Yeah.
And we're giving her more or less the flexibility to entertain both options, right? And so she'll be monitoring it, therefore I think we better let her ride with it. We run into a problem, obviously. Could stop that pretty quick if need be.
Okay, so we've taken that out. So the council approves the use of the pavilion as a farmer's market for 2017 overseen by the Director of Community Services.
Councillor Kylie?
I'd still like to see the commitment from the town to, I don't know if that's easy to do, contact or send a lawyer to somehow contact the commercial and Ma and Pa operations to, to, and waiting up to participate. I think that's the key because otherwise we're going to have a lot of luck.
Do you want that in here or is that just direction enough for Bonnie?
I've got it. That's not, that's not a problem. We will definitely do that. That was part of my intent anyways, where we wanted to invite the local stores to participate, so. And I can certainly come back, you know, give it a few weeks to see how this materializes. I can give a brief update prior to the end of the summer so that you'll know how it's progressing.
All in favor?
All in favor? Thank you. You're like the old days when we were kids, they had the farmer's market at the Curling Club. Yep, yep, exactly. Okay, item five, six, item five is Wolf, you're going to speak on the 100th Anniversary Committee.
Yeah, it's a fairly quick one. I think it was last fall, we brought names forward that, and the idea forward to develop a committee of council that would be looking after the 100th anniversary in 2019. We subsequently have had a number of people coming out to these different meetings. We have deferred on developing it as a formal committee and coming back to council with that because we were looking at some implications and other acts, aspects of operations, specifically their ability to do fundraising, et cetera. We're bringing it back to you now because this group will be participating in the merchant mania. They will be, as a committee, they are then covered by our insurance and that clears one more hurdle for them. So it's basically a formality of bringing this in and asking for your approval.
Yeah, it's a good idea to have it under our umbrella, but that aspect where they can actually access that money from the reserves or is that covered in this sort of wording?
Yes, it is. They can still take in applications and make comments on them. It comes through me back to council for your decision.
Okay.
It's moved by councillor Barker, seconded by councillor Mino. The council approves the Kirkland Lake 100th Anniversary Committee as a committee of council and approves the policy as presented by the Director of Economic Development and Tourism.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Introduction reading of consideration of bylaws.
It's moved by councillor Barker, seconded by councillor Mino, that bylaw seventeen dash zero five one, being a bylaw to appoint and execute an agreement with Michelle Loach as Kirkland Lake's Integrity Commissioner, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Thank you. Carrie?
It's moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Barker, that bylaw seventeen dash zero five one, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a lease agreement with the Ministry of Natural Resources for office hangar space at the Kirkland Lake Airport, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Notices of motion? Confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by councillor Mino, seconded by councillor Barker, that bylaw seventeen dash zero five three, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held May second, 2017, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Thank you. Councillors' reports? Councillor Barker?
Couple of things to report on. On Saturday, on behalf of the town, I was at the museum for the Contemporary Arts Committee's presentation on Sunday and it's incredible the quality, that, the quality of artists that we're attracting to the museum and, you know, created by our Contemporary Arts Committee and our Arts Council here in the community of Kirkland Lake. We had five artists from outside Canada, from Latin America, actually, from five different countries. I believe it was Brazil, Mexico, Puerto Rico, a couple of other places, but that... We're growing by leaps and bounds in the art industry and I think it's important that we recognize, you know, the quality of, that we offer here in the community and this is just another great event, so I'd like to extend congratulations to the Contemporary Arts Committee for a great job. We also had in attendance, one of the curators from one of the museums in Boston, come up and then check out our community. So it's neat that we're, we're having impacts all over the globe, so hats off to everyone. Second thing is the library. We just got some stats and it's incredible. Last year at this time, we had thirty-one, or ten children's after-school weekend, or weekend programs, we're up to thirty-one with attendance of two hundred and nineteen up from eighty-eight. So we are really impacting the community. They're utilizing the library more and more. Home schools, we're seeing more and more people using that as well as year-to-year's program capitalizing on the museum, or on the library. So it's well utilized and continues to grow in its use, so hats off to the library.
Thank you. Councillor Kylie?
Yes, in support of councillor Mino and councillor Morgan, I attended the Tumiskming Municipal Association Group meeting last week. We did your presentation, Norm and Todd, and it was well received. Again, you mentioned the key is to get the committee members from DSAB to support that, but there certainly was support amongst the municipal representatives at TMEG, so congratulations or thank you to both of you because the package was very well put together, easy to follow, and I think you hit the high points that needed to be done, so hopefully it's going to come through. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
I attended the Legion Memorial Banquet on behalf of the town. It was a great evening, paid tribute to the, to the few veterans that are still with us from World War II, as well as thanked all the Legion for their volunteer work for the community. As well, I attended the Horticultural Society Zone Twelve meeting here in Kirkland Lake on the weekend and there was about forty people there from all different communities around representing their horticultural club, so, and I thanked them for all the work that they do, specifically the civic plant that they do with us every year. And that's it.
It's moved by councillor Barker, seconded by councillor Mino. The council adjourned its regular meeting of May second, 2017, to nim camera meeting to discuss one litigation and one personnel issue concerning identifiable persons.
All in favor? Thank you.